I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly with everyone that it's dealing with the flood. Looks like we've got about another week to go and we'll get an update from Jason Gierman in Emergency Management on that in a little bit. But we would like to congratulate the Women's Jackrabbits for making the Sweet 16 and giving us all something to cheer about here in South Dakota. That's awful fun. Looks like there's a few fans representing today. So, anyway, just a reminder to silence your cellphone. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. And that takes us to routine business and to entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam Chair, I have the motion to amend the agenda to remove the word adjourned listed under the routine business and to replace it with the word recess so that the item reads as follow. Recess as the Minnehaha County Commission convene in joint meeting with the Del Rapids City Council with the intent to reconvene as the Minnehaha County Commission alone for the rest of the regular agenda after adjournment of the joint meeting.
Motion to approve, or second, excuse me.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, next item is I'd consider a motion to remove the commission meeting minutes. Oh, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now, I'd consider a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes from March 19th, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,379,188.45.
Move for approval.
Okay, second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's some reports there for your review. There's Minnehaha County Coroner Report for January, Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Report for February, and Auditor's Report. I think Kim Adamson, if you're, just give us a little brief overview of the financial reports.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have in front of you today's couple of reports of our February operating results. And the first chart I provided to you is a chart of the cash reserves in our general fund. And if you, I think Trish is going to pull that up for everybody. But it's showing that we have cash reserves at the end of February of eight point, almost $8.7 million. We are still running slightly below our cash reserve levels from last year. And that's due, it's due to three primary factors. It's property taxes that are coming in a little bit slower this year versus last year. If you'll recall, in 2018, there were a lot of advanced payments of tax. And that situation will reverse itself when we get to April and the first half tax collections come in for 2019. The other big factor is the number of payrolls we've had so far this year. In 2019, we've had five payrolls through the end of February compared to 2018. We've only had four. In March, we're going to be even with seven payrolls in both years, so that's going to change our cash position compared to last year. We don't anticipate any issues with our revenue projections or expenditure projections right now. So, this is just a snapshot in time of where our cash is. You were also provided a graph of the highway fund. The highway fund is currently sitting at slightly over $11 million. That's $2 million higher than cash from last year. There are, of course, a number of very large projects in the budget for the current fiscal year. And we've got a budget that will, we anticipate dipping into those cash reserves to fund those larger projects this year. We've added some graphs to show you where expenditures are year-to-date, year-to-year. At the top, the first graph you were given is the general fund total expenditures. They're running about $1.3 million higher than last year. Again, that's all related to payroll, which you see if you look to the second graph of just personnel expenses. We've expended 19% of our budget this year compared to 15 last year. And again, that's because of the number of pay periods so far this year. And lastly, you were provided some revenue graphs. Overall, our total revenues are about $700,000 below last year. Again, that is tied to property tax payments and the timing of those. And you can see that more clearly if you look at the graph specifically for property taxes. We're about $1 million lower this, year-to-date this year than we were last year. And we anticipate that that will all be caught up by the month of April when the first half taxes come in.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? Commissioner Benega.
Kim, can you tell us how much value we had last year with people who prepaid those property taxes that frankly were last year's revenue source?
The number, the total collected was over $7 million. The county's portion of that was probably $1 million and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? I appreciate you coming. These graphs are really helpful to help us to kind of see. And it's amazing, you know, just the value of a payroll here at the county.
Exactly.
So, thank you. All right, that takes us to item five, Personnel Actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next items are abatements recommended for approval. Olivia.
The abatements recommended for approval, we have A through G. We have the Veterans Tax Exemption Parcel 39764, 2016 Property Taxes, in the amount of $1,369.95. B is Veteran Tax Exemption Parcel 39764, 2017 Property Taxes, in the amount of $1,521.17. C is also the Veteran Tax Exemption Parcel 39764, 2018 Property Taxes, in the amount of $1,508.1. Then D is the Assessment Freeze Parcel 42625, 2018 Property Taxes, in the amount of $360.87. C is the City of Sioux Falls Parcel 44583, 2018 Property Tax Exempt, in the amount of Then we have the Assessment Freeze Item F for Parcel 46894, 2018 Property Taxes, in the amount of $262.56. And then Item G, Assessment Freeze Parcel 49228, 2018 Property Taxes, in the amount of $683.17.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, roll call vote. Thank you.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to item H. Olivia?
Item H is an abatement recommended for denial. Sherwin DeWitt Parcel 69371, 2018 Property Taxes, in the amount of $776.95.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Question or comment? This was because an owner occupied status was not received, is that correct?
That is what the application information that I have says, yes. I believe Chris Lilla is here from Equalization.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Yeah, this one here's a little before my time, so I'm catching it at the tail end. But yes, our office with the transfer of property mailed out an owner occupied application on February 1st of that year. It was not received back to our office. The applicants then came in on April 17th to make application and also the abatement request. The deadline was March 15th of that year, so.
Thank you.
So, they don't claim, I'm sorry if I may, there's no claim by them that they?
Yeah, it was non-owner occupied for continuing with that PT-56 transfer, so it requires an application. The application was made after the deadline date of March 15th. So, we've got them on for the future, for the next year, but going in the rear, there's nothing we can do by our laws. So, the abatement request is on your plate.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the denial.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the denial. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item seven, Notice and Request. There are none. Item eight, Planning and Zoning, notices, there are none. Item nine, Petition for Compromise of Lean, there are none. So, that takes us to an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to comment about something that is not on our agenda this morning? Okay, seeing none. Take us to regular business. I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting and move into the joint Minnehaha County-City of Del Rapids meeting.
So move. Benega?
Have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, we are now in the, okay, I'll seek a motion to convene into the joint Minnehaha County-City of Del Rapids meeting.
Motion to convene.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So, now, I'd ask the City of Del Rapids to state whether there's a quorum on their side.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mayor Early, we, City of Del Rapids, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, now, I need a motion from them to move into the joint meeting? Okay. Could I get a motion to move into the joint meeting?
Entertain a motion.
Move by Mr. Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hawk. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So, now, we all have a public hearing of the Minnehaha County Commission and the Del Rapids City Council to consider an amendment to the 2001 revised joint ordinance for Minnehaha County and the City of Del Rapids. Kevin Hookman.
Yes, good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just noted, this is rezoning number 1902 to rezone a portion of the property from A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. The property is located at the interstate intersection of Del Rapids in the northwest corner of the section, of the intersection. The property is an existing manufacturing location. A portion of the property is zoned industrial already, but the property over the years has expanded to take more land, but the industrial has not changed its zoning boundaries to fit the expansion. So, this request would fill the remaining portion of the property to all industrial zoned. The Del Rapids Interstate Exit is largely developed with industrial and commercial uses. As you can see in that map, there's lots of other buildings and properties being used. The expansion meets a projected future land use plan, as this is an intersection, is a rural service area in the envisioned 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The item was brought to the Joint Planning Commission for the city and the county. At that meeting held in February 25th, it was unanimously recommended for approval. And I just have a couple photos to show of the property. This is looking towards the interstate or to the east from the driveway. And then there's the existing trailer manufacturing on the property. So, if you have any questions, I can hear for them or move forward.
Commissioner Karski?
Sorry to throw this out at you, Kevin, but just curious, is this kind of discovered after the fact, so we better fix this because they bought this land? And if so, I mean, how would, if you're out in ag area with a small parcel and you add on, how would you know to keep this from happening so, you know, so we don't get caught in the situation?
Sure. This was discovered because staff noticed a non-compliant billboard on the property. And when we contacted the property owner, they expressed their intent to have a billboard on the property. And in order to do so, they have to have it zoned as an industrial zoning district. So, that was kind of the background of it. I guess it's more about what you plan on using the property for. Again, I don't know that we would have necessarily had a problem with them storing their trailers out in the back behind their property, it was just that they had that billboard in the property.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for Kevin? So, I would entertain a motion? No, it's a public hearing, so is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this item? Anyone who would like to, is opposed to this application or to this change in the zoning? Okay. Okay, so, I've been asked to make note that Commissioner Heiburger received.
That's not for this one.
It's not for this one?
That's for a different one.
Okay, thank you. So, we've, is nobody that'd like to speak in favor or opposed to this, so now I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So, motion to approve and second on the Minnehaha side. Roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously on the Minnehaha side, Del Rapids.
Entertain a motion to approve the rezoning request. Move by Mr. Barry Berg to approve the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any questions? If not, would you please call a roll?
Berg?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Garrett?
Eric?
Hawk?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Ron Taugen, Meyer, and Orchard are both.
So, motion's passed.
All right, thank you. Once again, we thank you guys for all coming up here. It's been a really busy time in Del Rapids. We know that you guys have all been working hard and we appreciate all the hard work, the community spirit that you guys have demonstrated up there.
Appreciate the support of the county.
Yeah.
Sheriff's Department, EMS, you bet. Okay. I guess we'll.
Well, we've got, we need to have an opportunity for public comment and then we'll adjourn. So, opportunity for public comment about something that's not on the agenda, something we're required to do. I don't see anybody running to the podium. So, now, we'd move to adjourn. I'll take a motion to adjourn on the Del Rapids side first.
Entertain motion to adjourn. Mr. Hawk makes that motion. Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Mr. Schmidt seconds it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, now, I'd take a motion to adjourn the Minnehaha, on the Minnehaha County side?
A motion to adjourn. And can we make a motion to reconvene as a, or is that a second motion?
That's a second motion, apparently.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all for coming. Now, we'll take a motion to adjourn into, to the Minnehaha County Commission.
Move to reconvene.
Second.
Reconvene, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Takes us through some of those hoops. Now, we have a flood update. Jason Gierman.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County, Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management. I'll kind of start from where I ended the last time. Basically, you know, the weather forecast has really helped us out. We're not getting the flows that we thought we were in the Del Rapids Sioux Falls area. The Skunk Creek that Sioux Falls was worried about hasn't really been much of an issue. Some of the things that the Sheriff's Office has done during these high water periods specifically is they've moved some resources out into the county, mainly from other divisions that might be working more in Sioux Falls to assist with telling people to not to drive down the roads, not to go into Renner. We've had staffing in Renner and Baltic to make sure people aren't causing problems, traffic issues. Along with Del Rapids, we've had some extra people up there. And the South Dakota Highway Patrol's also been helping out. They've switched to 12-hour shifts and kept everybody on until this is over with. Now, some of the issues that are different than a normal flood is the high water level's going to remain for quite some time. They're saying up to 10 days. The crest was this morning in Del Rapids or late yesterday evening, if I'm correct? Somewhere in there. They handled it very well and my thoughts go out to Dells and they did an excellent job up there along with Renner. Renner was very prepared and it made my job a lot easier with them, the experience that they have in dealing with these things. We did station a boat up in Dells, which we haven't needed yet and hopefully we won't. Game Fish and Parks had plenty of boats available for us too, stationed up at their place at, up at the DOT shop on 60th Street North. Other than that, now, we're going to be working towards damage assessment. So, I've distributed some information to Planning and Zoning, Commission Office, if we start getting calls from townships, mayors, that we can start to distribute this information on how they assess their damage and how they report it back to me. So, this is going to be another busy time. I'm new to this and actually, a lot of people in Emergency Management are, I'm finding, because this hasn't happened for quite some time. Even at the state level, you know, some of the people that advise me haven't went through this. So, just to make it clear, and I've spoke with Commissioner Chair Bender about this, that I'm thinking in the next couple of weeks, we'll meet that threshold for damage, just with the City of Sioux Falls and what they're dealing with. So, it's my understanding that the National Weather Service has made this one long incident instead of separating it from the flood that Wednesday and Thursday and to the next. So, that helps instead of separating it. So, what I'll be working on here coming up is getting that information out. You know, how do we deal with sandbags now that this is kind of waning right now? So, and then how do we get that information out to the townships? And I do have a meeting with the townships on April 1st, so I'm hoping that, you know, that's coming at a good time and we'll get this out and get the information back to us as quick as possible so we can get this rolling. And I'm already getting requests from the state wondering if we're going to declare a disaster, which I've said we probably will, but I just have to have the numbers. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Commissioner Karski?
Just a comment. Yesterday after lunch, I kind of went north to see how things were looking and I saw the deputies parked outside of Renner. And I appreciate the Sheriff's Office stepping up and doing the extra work and keeping people from maybe making choices that they shouldn't have made. So, it was, it was good to see people out there. And, you know, while the flooding, I mean, if you're personally affected, it's bad, but it could have been much worse for all of us. If we had had, I mean, a little bit of rain on top of what we had or whatever, I mean, we were that close to really taking a really, really hard hit. This is bad, but it could have been much worse. And it's just the way people prepared and the communities prepared, Del Rapids and so on, they've done a great job, so just to thank them.
Yeah, it was, like I said, no one person could deal with this, so it was a team effort and especially the towns. You know, when you get over 2,000 volunteers show up and you have to turn some away, that's a good problem to have. We kept offering and offering Dells, you know, more resource and they said, no, we're fine, we're fine. But, you know, they got it handled along with Renner. But they're so used to dealing with it by themselves, we want to be there to help, but it's a strong community, so. And just a side note on the weather, we did dodge a bullet by not having rain this time of year because typically, according to the Weather Service, we would get, you know, a substantial amount of rain, which for once that helped, we didn't, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Comment too, that in my area, the townships have started repairing roads already. I've seen quite a few gravel trucks out dumping and maintainers out. And I know there's a lot of road damage to be fixed as we're drying out, in my area anyway, in a lot of areas in that they're fixing them. And I'm just happy to see how quickly they've got out there and they've got a lot of expenses coming. And I spent a little time up in Dells too, and I know all the communities are great, but it was the spirit up in Del Rapids, you guys is amazing. And I'm sure it was probably that way in the other communities too, but I just got to be witness some of that people's pull together is really amazing, so.
On a side note there, I encourage these townships, if anybody's listening to this, take pictures and document your damage before you start to fix your roads. And I'm hoping they've done that. There should be some experience there and historical knowledge that they've done that. And then, there was a group out of Iowa, a college, I think there was a college lineman's, Joe, what was the name of the college?
Northwest Iowa.
What's that?
Northwest Iowa.
Northwest Iowa Community College came up and brought like 50 volunteers. They filled 4,000 sandbags from 9:00 till like 12:30 in Del Rapids. It was pretty amazing how they went to town on that, so.
The difference between college students and me, apparently, huh?
Exactly. Exactly.
So. Has to fill any either, so.
Well.
We'll have a chance to get rid of some. Those kids are going to love their sandboxes this year, so.
Well, we really appreciate all the work that your team and there's, you know, I had an opportunity to go to the EOC yesterday, a huge team of people that have been working very tirelessly for up to two weeks now. We've got at least another week ahead as we kind of wind down now. I just want, if people have, individual homeowners have damages, I know you're getting some information out about this, but they can call 211, is that correct?
Yep, 211 has agreed to doing a damage assessment for personal property and homeowners for us, which is a great resource. Now, I don't know how many homes will be damaged or assessed, you know, like the Del Rapids, there's some qualifications that have to be met, livable basement, so forth. And again, I'm new to this, but this is, I'm learning on the fly, we'll say. But the resources may be limited there, but at least call in and get that assessment so we can figure out in the future whether or not there's going to be any monetary reimbursement.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, once again, thank you so much for the work that you've done and for keeping us so well informed along the way of what is going on and what is needed, so.
One of the things that has made this process pretty simple is the incident command structure that we go by. And, you know, we've had the mayor, you guys have kept in contact with me, but literally kept a more of a stress-free environment by, you know, letting the people that know what they're doing do their job and keeping up on things. And as long as we keep them informed, you know, they keep us informed. And thanks for all the food that they sent our way. I think I gained about five pounds last week, but yeah. Off to damage assessment.
All right.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
All right.
Shannon, I see you sitting over in the corner. Did you want to give us an update on just the status of the roads?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. Trish has a short video. Before she plays that, I just wanted to review a few things. All west, east and west roads north of I-90 between Del Rapids and I-15, South Dakota 115, they're all closed. They were starting to close on Saturday. Basically, they were closed about mid, the last one was to go was Renner and that was closed Sunday. So, not a lot of travel east and west there between the South Dakota 115 and the interstate. Some additional closures also include Highway 102 in the northeast corner. However, this morning, I just heard that the water has come down enough and happy circumstance there is we have a contract ready to go. That pipe was to be replaced. There's going to be a picture of that location on this video, so you'll see what's going on there. And then also Buffalo Lake on Highway 104 in the northwest portion, that's closed. And then there's a curve around Grass Lake on County Highway 159 that's also closed. So, we expect these to be closed at least through April 2nd to 3rd. As was a little too earlier, the flooding is going to be persistent and that's a problem for us because it's going to saturate our subgrades. And so, we don't know what kind of strength we're going to have left. We're going to try and get some soil borings there to tell us, you know, give us some assurance that it's okay to run vehicle traffic and maybe truck traffic. So, our closures there might be a little longer. You know, I talked to some counties in Iowa that had some flooding similar and most of those were short-term floodings, 12 to 18 hours. And so, they opened up their roads right away, you know, with 10, 11, 12 days of saturation. We just don't know what strengths we're going to have. We just don't know what strengths we're going to have. As you know, we have clay subgrades and so when they get saturated, they get pretty soft. We're a little worried about that. We have our message boards out. They're, they're providing information. If you guys have seen anything, you've probably seen our message boards there coming from either side, east or west to the Big Sioux on those routes. And of course, appropriate traffic control. And that's been great. You know, Metro's been very good communicating with us and, and we've seen many law enforcement out there too. And so it's, like they said, it's a group effort. And certainly on our side too, we had plenty of people all weekend out there. And you know, kind of whatever happened was going to happen on Sunday. And so Monday morning wasn't too crazy. So the communication is working, you know, people are expecting it and that just makes our jobs easier, keeping people safe. So. If you guys see something you want to stop, Trish, I think, can push pause on the video and we can talk about it. But I'm going to try and, this is, it's a minute 16, so it's going to go quickly. So this is County Road 130 west of Renner flying, well, this one is not flying yet, but the next one here is going to be the same location flying westbound. That's ditch road there going off to the distance on the top of the screen. This is flying westbound flows to your south or to the left.
Shannon, this was all filmed with your drone?
With a drone, you betcha. We have two certified pilots now. So this one's Grass Lake 159, 1.2 miles south of I-90, south of Humboldt. You can kind of see some ice sheeting there. Lot of water behind that road. That's the discharge. So half the lane is saturated and so that road's closed. So this, the next one here is Jasper Street from Dell Rapids East, flying east. This one's about a half mile, maybe more. This was taken before the peak. We estimated right there, well, it's coming up right here. It's about a foot and a half deep. So it probably got closer to two feet deep at its deepest point. So there's 102 on the very northeast part of the county, sharing our Moody County line highway there. Again, that was taken on Sunday night just before it got dark. And so more likely that road is halfway gone, not just a quarter gone. So that road's closed. And again, we have a contractor. He's up there right now looking at it. I think he's going to start next week. So that's all good news there. So any questions?
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. When you talked about the road closures, obviously right now it's easy to see the reason the roads are closed because there's water on them. I'm concerned about, and I'm sure you are too, once those roads look dry and people think, well, I can just drive around the barricade and how we make the public aware that you're driving around the barricade with your heavy truck or your tractor or your semi is causing damage to the road and that's coming out of your pocket and your tax dollars to fix these roads. You ruin them because they're wet? We're going to have longer issues as we try to rebuild these roads that have been ruined. I don't know how we get that message out. Maybe Kello would be willing to do a spot up in the cup, in the, you know, in this next week. Because when they look dry, everybody's like, well, I can just drive around. They just haven't taken the barricades down. So it, it really is a concern for highway and for us going forward with, with the highway budget.
A hundred percent agree with you, Commissioner. And frankly, they're driving through them when they're wet.
I know they are.
So one of the things we can do is put a hard closure, which is basically not giving them an option to move the barricades or, you know, using jersey rail, the concrete sections. We haven't really got that far yet. You know, we have a few days before we have to make those kinds of decisions and assessments. Again, April 1st, 2nd, 3rd, sometime in there, we expect our roads to start not having overtopping. So we'll see. The, the weather has been cooperative in terms of avoiding some, as bad as it was, it could have been worse. So it's been, I guess, better than it could have been. So that's a blessing in itself.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Shannon? Well, once again, just want to reiterate, thanks to you and your team, DJ. I know you guys were working all weekend long. And I know I was up on 250th Street on Saturday afternoon was already getting covered by water. And so I know it was a long weekend. It's been a long couple of weeks for you guys and it's got a lot of work ahead of you. So we appreciate all you guys do.
That's true. And regarding Mr. Gierman's call for damage assessment, and it's going to take us some time. We, we won't be able to see bridge abutment footings for a while. We won't be able to see the bottoms of culverts to see if there's erosion for a while. So it's, it's not a, you know, just because it's not overtopped, that doesn't mean that we have an accurate understanding of what the damages might be. So it'll be some time.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here this morning. Okay. So that takes us to item 11. It's a public hearing to consider an application by TDC Enterprise Retail on, for retail on sale license. Olivia?
Yes. TDC Enterprises has submitted a retail on sale annual liquor license application for their Event Barn that you all heard for the, at the joint planning meeting on February 26, 2019. The building itself does not yet exist. So you may, Tyler is here. You may want to ask him questions about how he intends to use the license. And the reason I bring this up is just precaution for the county as well as Tyler, just because there is a South Dakota law requiring that licenses be in active use. So just make sure you keep that in mind. And the application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, the State's Attorney's Office and the Planning Department. And the Planning Department has recommended that if you approve the license, the approval be contingent on the Plan Development Rezone Ordinance MC 304019 becoming effective because there is a possibility of an appeal.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? So Tyler?
Hello, I'm Tyler with Thorridge Plan Development. This obviously is going to be for our Event Barn and that type of stuff. I just wanted to just clarify so I understand the understanding. So is the concept to have it take effect once the building is complete? Is that kind of what my understanding is?
The, the Planning Department has only recommended that it take, wait until the ordinance is effective, which is April 3rd.
Sure.
It's up to you as a commission if you want to wait until the building is built.
Our plan, our goal is to have the final development plan on April 23rd, have 24th, have the building permit in hand and then start construction at that time. Goal of completion will be December 31st. We already have a couple of events that want to have New Year's Eve parties and such. So that'd be kind of the goal of the timeframe.
Any questions? Any questions for Tyler this time? Commissioner Benega?
Tyler, do you expect to have any events there before the building is constructed at the end of the year? Or is, because you have outdoor activity possibilities, I would guess.
We do. Right now it's a construction site, so it's not very pretty and not nice. So with how money it is, I don't see that happening this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm assuming that the reason you want to do it right now is because there's one, only one available liquor license. And if you waited until November, you may lose your opportunity, which destroys your business plan.
Yeah, the business plan doesn't hinge on this. It's just a good add-on to it. When I first came, we didn't know one was available. Tried to apply for beer and wine license and then noticed one available. So then we just quickly hop on that.
Okay. Commissioner Karski?
Liquor license isn't a small dollar amount to obtain. And obviously there's some risk involved in the plan you have. If you're fully aware of that and are willing to go forward, I would be supportive of granting the license and I'd make that motion.
I think we have to have opponent's opportunity first.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who would like to oppose this application? Speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, I think I am open to a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Can I ask what the motion is so I know where we went with this motion?
Move approval of the license sale to TDC or application approval, I guess. Help me out, Olivia.
Do you want that to include the recommendation from the Planning Department of effective April 3rd?
Does that, it doesn't impact his ability to get that license?
No, it would still have to go through the Department of Revenue. So it probably wouldn't even be here by then.
Okay. And if I could ask Mr. Childress, does that, if that impacts his plan?
It, it does not. I actually probably would prefer that to be at a later time if that's possible because I have to use it for my time period within two years. So we don't plan to use the liquor license until later on. So if we could ask for a November 1st date, if that's possible, I don't know what that is or not. But that'll allow some flexibility in the timeframe as a new business starts to use that. My understanding, you have to try to use it 60 days out of a two-year period. So if we use nine months and we're not having events, then it puts a little pressure on us at that point.
I'm not sure we have the flexibility legally to do that. So I think that the idea is more that we needed to. It's been recommended that we make it contingent until actual effective date of the.
That works for me.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So that would be my motion to grant the approval of the application effective April 3rd, if I said that right.
I will second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So that takes us to item 12, which is a public hearing to consider carryover supplements to the 2018 to the 2019 budget. Kim Adamson, welcome back.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're here today to consider budget carryover supplements to our 2019 budget. These supplement requests fall primarily into two categories. One being projects that were budgeted in 2018, which were not completed or billed to us until after we closed that fiscal year. And secondly, any unspent grant or donation dollars are carried over to the next budget year. We do have one additional request on the list this year that is somewhat out of the ordinary and that is a supplement to the jail for inmate supplies. And Captain Joe Bosman and Warden Gromer are here to address that request specifically. I guess we could invite them up to address that request first and then we can go through the remainder of the requests.
Okay. Thanks. Gromer, you lost the flip, huh?
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, Warden at the jail. I think you guys have the memo that I typed up. Kind of explains where the budget savings were at from 2018. The jail overall had a very good year from a budget standpoint. And within the smaller subset of the medical department of the jail, we had an exceptional year. That, those costs were primarily from some savings in staffing that was below what was budgeted. But off-site care and pharmacy, there were some very substantial savings in that medical budget. With the jail expansion and the need to equip the expanded facility, this certainly appears like a very good opportunity for me to use, from my perspective, to use some of those budget savings to purchase equipment and materials that we're going to need to occupy that portion of the jail. This allows us to use these carryover funds rather than money that was bonded out of the, for the jail project. It just seems to make sense to me. We have a substantial amount of savings in that budget. We're asking to use at least $150,000 of that toward that, toward those supplies and equipment. Obviously, we could use even more than that, but I think that the $150,000 is a fairly reasonable number for that.
Any questions with Warden?
All right.
Thank you very much.
So in addition to that $150,000 request for the jail, the general fund has requests totaling $925,000 for the year. You've been provided a list of the individual requests and we can run through that list or I can address any questions. Trish, if you want to scroll a little further, there's a spreadsheet there that gives a little more detail as far as what the requests are for. Are there any questions about specific items there? As I said, most, most of the items are projects that were not completed during the year. One of, one significant item is in IT. We're carrying over $400,000 for the Munis implementation project. We're now in phase three of that project, which is the payroll implementation. And we will go live with the Munis payroll on July 1st.
Any questions for Kim in particular? Commissioner Benega?
My only question was on the hospital settlements. That brings us through year 2015. It seems like that gets later and later all the time. Is that typical of how far behind we are with those?
It is. We've been, we've had a number of years where we've not settled on some of those older claims. And so we continue to carry forward a budget allotment to cover those items.
Questions for Kim?
So then, in addition to the general fund requests, we've got a number of requests for special revenue funds. The Highway Department has requested $1,447,226. And that is for a number of projects that are under contract that had not been completed in 2018. That is a pretty typical carryforward request that we see. The other very, very significant item is the carryover for the jail expansion project. That budget carryover will be $37,679,157. And that just represents the unspent budget from the bond proceeds. So the total budget supplements for the special revenue funds are $39,743,446.79.
Any questions? To entertain a motion then.
It's a public hearing. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
It's a public hearing.
A public hearing. All right. Thank you. Yep. That's a good reminder. I think they're all public hearings today. So I should remember this. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of these carryovers that hasn't already spoken? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against any of these carryovers? Okay. Now I'm ready for a motion.
I would move that we carry over $39,743,446.79 to 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I believe we'll need another request for the general fund of 925,000.
Motion for the general fund, 925,000.
It's 925,808.84.
Thank you. I almost closed my window.
Okay. So there's a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. Do we need a roll call vote on that as well, Olivia? Yeah. Okay.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Okay. That takes us to item 13, which is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Kevin Hookman.
Kevin Hookman again, County Planning Department. Rezoning number 1808 is rezonate a portion of the property from R1 Residential Zoning District to C Commercial Zoning District. And there's a map of it. You'll see the area in red is where the rezoning is to take place. The rezoning is located in the north side of Lyons where there's the abandoned school building is located. The request for the rezoning started while staff were pursuing compliance for complaint of vehicles and junk being stored in the property. The property owner explained that he desired to keep the items on the property for commercial purposes. The staff brought the item to the Planning Commission, heard the item twice. The first hearing was in October 2018 and the Planning Commission decided that it was not appropriate to make, take action on it while there's still so much junk and items on the property. So the item was deferred to allow cleanup of the property. Then again, in February 2019, the item was heard to review the condition and action was taken. At that Planning Commission, neighborhood concerns included, included aesthetics, environmental concerns about vehicles and residential property located next to commercial property. The Planning Commission took these into consideration and unanimously voted to deny the rezoning request. And the Board of County Commissioners may vote to amend, approve or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, rezoning number 1808. I'll show you some of the pictures as well. So I have here on the PowerPoint some photos from the October public hearing and then for the February public hearing. And other than the snow, you can, you'll probably see that it hasn't changed much. A lot of the items are still on the property. And then there's October again. And most everything's still on the property. And most everything's still on the property. And this was another item of staff concern that the road is very narrow. It's really a road that's only one way in, one way out, or, so if this was approved in the, say, the conditional use permitting process, the, for storage of outdoor materials, we could work with the petitioner to do some road improvements with the, with the township. But then this is what staff was concerned about primarily was these sort of junk items. We, staff brought up the idea that if the petitioner wanted to keep cars in the property, because that's his intent to hold commercial cars and to sell cars in the future, but he didn't even make an attempt to hold, to clean up the other items that were not cars, and that was concerning for staff and for the planning commission. So with that being said, I'm here for questions, and I see that there are some people here for the item as well, so.
Any questions specifically for Kevin? Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the amendment to the zoning ordinance? No one here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance? You can come to the microphone and just please identify yourself. Give your name and address, please.
Harold Boer, 46608, 252 Street, Lyons, South Dakota. And I do own a business in Lyons, and we work, work to keep our place neat and clean and have a good appearance. On this, they have had an opportunity to clean it up, or at least make an attempt to clean it up, and they have chosen not to do so. So our concern in Lyons would be that pending zoning approval and conditional use permit, why, why would we expect it to be cleaned up and maintained in a good appearance in the future? And that's our concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against, has different ideas or comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
I would just comment that I did receive one message online from Terry and Deb Bundy that live across the street from that area, and so that's part of the record. I think everyone up here got a copy of that, and they are opposed also to the moving forward.
All right, so we've had an opportunity for those to speak in favor and against. I'd be open to a motion to either amend, approve, or deny the amendment. Commissioner Karski?
Question for Kevin. Rezoning this to commercial doesn't authorize them to operate a dump, does it?
No, no, they would still have to clean up much of the property, but it would authorize them, like I said, to maintain the, a lot of the cars there have a dealer license on it, or no license at all, and it would allow them to operate a dealer's license with the conditional use permit.
I'm looking at a dump, so I'm sorry. So I'm going to recommend, recommend denial of the application to rezone.
I'll second that.
So motion and a second. Any other comments?
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner Bender first.
It just seems to me that we've given petitioner many opportunities to clean this up, and he's literally challenging us each time to say he's going to do something and nothing ever gets done. It's to the point where we either need to make a statement or not pay attention to the mess we got. And frankly, I'm a little grumpy at listening to those kinds of responses, because, not yours, but the petitioner's responses. We've had this happen twice or three times with different people that, literally until you get to the very end, they kind of stick our nose in it. Frankly, I think it's time to say no.
Commissioner Heiburger?
My comment was just that, Kevin, how will we move forward with, with a motion and a second to deny, but it needs to be cleaned up. And so how much longer do we have to wait to enforce the fact that they're got it cleaned up?
Sure. I suppose, yeah, it'll probably be, there was a final letter that was sent, and then he applied, and we, we kind of moved through this process. It would probably be best to send one more deadline. Usually we'll give about a month, and then at that point, then we send out certified mail for another public hearing for a public nuisance.
So we're talking at least another two and a half months?
About a month to two months, yeah.
The speed of government.
Hopefully by then it'll be dry.
Right.
Commissioner Karski?
It's zoned residential. Is anybody living on those properties?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Motion and a second. I take a roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So the motion passes to deny the amendment. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 14, which is another public hearing. It's a public hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised ordinance for Minnehaha County. David, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, County Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. The rezoning request 1903 is to rezone approximately, it's a portion of property which contains two parcels totaling 2.85 acres. It's from the A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. The property, if we can pull up the PowerPoint, is located, it's kind of in an island just west of Brandon, about a half mile. The, the shaded area that you'll see on the map here in a second is just on Heritage Boulevard. It's actually, it's, it's in between the intersections of Heritage Avenue and Holly Boulevard. So the two, skip forward one. As you can see, the property is outlined in red. It's right there, and right in between. The area shaded in white is the city of Brandon. Staff, we, we sent the request to the city of Brandon's staff and didn't hear anything back from them, because we don't have a formal joint jurisdiction with them. We just sent it to them, see if they have any thoughts, and didn't get anything back from the planning commission, or before, prior to the planning commission meeting. The, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning, provided some of the documents. The petitioner also submitted some documents as well. One of those was the zoning map for the city of Brandon, and the minutes were included as well with some of the issues that were presented. And so, action, the Board of County Commissioners may vote to approve or deny rezoning 1903. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I do have some pictures, I'd be glad to show you them. The applicant did provide a, kind of a sketch of what they envisioned for the property. Looks like just some storage units there for indoor storage. And this is looking at the property. There's currently a house on the property. It was brought up with the meeting that ultimately the house would go away with the proposed development, or future development. And then this is looking at Holly Boulevard, the county highway there running through Brandon. Looking, this is looking back towards Brandon, towards the river, and off to the, the right of that image is kind of a strip mall development there inside city limits. And then this is looking south. This is, looks like a residential property just immediately south of the subject property, also in city limits. And then just looking again at that strip, that strip mall development, commercial, and then housing off in the distance there, single-family housing, and then just looking at that again. And, and that'll run you through all the pictures there. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a couple of questions. There's currently a house on that, so if they change this to A1 Light Industrial, obviously that house is going away, but there's a building eligibility there. Are they aware that they lose their building eligibility, and is that going to be moved to the property that's next door to it? I don't know if, if the farm field here is owned by this corner person, so I'm wondering if they're aware that the, what goes on with the building eligibility?
I'm not sure if the petitioner is aware, but that's correct. The building eligibility will go away with the rezoning.
I think it's important to let that, does the person own that agricultural spot there? Are they, does the same person own both of these?
The adjacent land to the east?
Yes.
I'm not, not sure who owns the property to the east of this.
I, I think that's an important point, that if we're going to rezone this, they need to have the opportunity to sell their building eligibility, move it to the other spot, because if we approve it, it just goes away. And, I mean, that is, that is collateral, that, I mean, that's, that's an income for the person who owns that building eligibility, and I don't want it to come back in six months and say, what happened to my building eligibility? And I think if we approve this today, that means it automatically goes away today. So that is my concern. Scott's here, maybe Scott can help with that question. I have another question too, but that would be?
We can contact, we'll, we'll research who owns the property next to it, and it wouldn't go away today. It, it wouldn't go away until the ordinance becomes effective, and Olivia can tell you what that date would be. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but it would probably be several more weeks, and they would have time to make an application to move that building eligibility if they wanted to. We'll let them know.
I, yeah, I think that's important to follow up with that comment. I have another question, but Commissioner Benega, did you have a comment?
I've got a, just a question or clarification. If they transfer it or sell it, does it have to go to a, an owner that has at least 40 acres for an eligibility?
No, it, it just has to be contiguous property in the same ownership. So it, we will need to verify that the parcel to the east is the same, exact same ownership as the parcel that's being rezoned, and then we can, we'll let them know, and if they would like to move that eligibility, they can make an application.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Can't they sell that building eligibility if it's, if it's a neighbor? They cannot do that.
No, it has to be in the same, it has to be contiguous and in the same ownership.
The same ownership, okay, that was the only thing that wasn't. I have another question unrelated.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My second question is, is this is not, is, the rest of the surrounding area is the city of Brandon, and this particular spot has not been annexed? I mean, has there been conversation about that? I mean, I read the briefing, but just, you would just update us a little bit on that.
The property owners, my understanding, has been in discussion with the city of Brandon on this development and future annexation into the city.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Is the applicant here? I thought so. If you'd just introduce yourself.
Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle, Brandon. I'm going to hand out to you the Brandon current zoning map. Can I answer your question, Commissioner?
He jumped my question before he had a chance to talk.
Thank you. Thank you.
Basically, what I just handed out there is the current, I made application, or not application, I guess, to the Brandon planning and zoning in July of 18. Currently, why I'm here today is the property does not have sewer services to it, so to build a commercial development, that we have to use a septic tank. And then once that is completed, then it can be annexed into the city. That was kind of the recommendation from the planning there. And they didn't, you'll see that it's not spot zoning, it's exactly the same zoning as it's around it. That's Su Valley Energy that adjoins that. This particular property is not owned by the same people next door. So.
Any other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
So you said they had, you have to put in a septic tank. Isn't there already a septic tank with the house that's there?
There is, there is.
And so does that qualify you for already, or do you have to put a new one in?
Potentially a new one, just because of the location. Where the house is located, it's just straight into the driveway.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who'd like to oppose this amendment?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 15, and I consider a motion to declare a 2013 Dodge Caravan, Dodge Grand Caravan that was involved in a collision as surplus. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. I have a request that's twofold in front of you this morning. The first is, one of our jail inmate transport vans was involved in a collision on March 1st resulting in dissembling damage to the minivan. The other vehicle that struck our van is represented by American Family Insurance, have declared themselves liable for the collision. The repair estimate to fix our minivan is more than what the van is worth due to its age and amount of mileage that is on it. So American Family says that they would buy it out, more or less total it, salvage it. We give them the title. They cut us a check for $9,617.32 in exchange for that minivan. So the first request I would like the Commission to authorize is to surplus County Asset 1107, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan to American Family Insurance in exchange for the insurance check of $9,617.32.
That's my motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to surplus the 2013 Dodge Caravan. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. So that motion passes unanimously, so.
You're probably right that it's no longer a Grand Caravan.
[laughing]
Just a van, we won't even call it a Caravan. The second request follow-up is then to make sure that our fleet of vehicles for jail transport is still adequate to maintain the inmate transports that we are required to do on a daily 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. The loss of this minivan does put a little bit of a strain on that, so the request this time would be to seek a purchase of a different replacement Dodge Grand Caravan, and our goal is to use the $9,617.32. We would request that back at the end of the year as a supplement into the jail budget as part of this purchase, as well as some potential other 2019 budget savings in the jail budget to purchase a replacement Dodge Grand Caravan.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 16, just authorize the chairperson to sign a memorandum of understanding with SDSU Extension for the 2019 4-H Advisor salary. Chuck, good morning.
Good morning. Chuck Marshnall, SDSU Extension, 4-H Program Advisor, May County Extension Office. Just sent my memo out, and if you guys have any questions about it. This is an ongoing agreement we've had for the last several years to supplement the 4-H Advisor, and seems to be working out in our favor currently.
All right, any questions for Chuck?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairperson to sign a listing agreement with NEI. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is the action requested is to authorize the chairperson to sign the listing agreement with NEI. We have a building for sale, 908 Northwest Avenue, and that has been on the market for a year with this broker. It's a large building. We know that it's going to take a while to go through and find the right user for that particular facility. So all terms of the contracts would stay the same. The price, list pricing would now be $1.85 million, and it would extend the contract to March 31st, 2020.
Any questions for Carol? Now to entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 18, Liaison Reports. Commissioner Karski?
I met with DJ Boothay at Highway last week, kind of a regular update. I'm happy to report things are moving well. I'm very pleased to have one of our civil attorneys on staff out there right now. I think it's been a win-win for everybody. It's going to make productivity out there that much better. You've seen some of the stuff that Highway Department's been doing with drones, and also even on social media, very large growth and following, and I think it's, the morale out at Highway, I think, is very high, at least my impression of that is. I think it's going to do a lot for recruiting and retention out at Highway Department, too. So I'm very happy to say that I, I'm impressed with the job that DJ's doing and the work that's going on out there, just to pass that on.
Okay, any other liaison reports? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm not sure mine is liaison because I'm not with the ambulance, but I did have a phone call this week from Logan Township Supervisor, asking, just bring it to our attention, can we do a tax, local tax, to support ambulances? He was looking at his tax sheet. He was looking at his tax sheet that you come in the mail and it has the breakdown of what you pay for the school districts. And he said, this is one of the first years we've done that. And he said, I noticed I pay $168 for a quarter of bare ground towards the library, which that library levy has been in place for many years and it supports the rural library system and the, well, the Sulan library system. And it's been very beneficial to us. And he said, why can't we do this for ambulance? And now I know we've kicked this around many a times. They are planning on bringing it up at the district, what do I call it, Carol? The township meeting, which is, Association of Township Meeting, which is a Monday night, yes. And they plan to talk about it there. And now I know they're probably going to be busy talking about roads too and all the issues they're dealing with flooding. But there is interest out there. And so I did bring it to Carol and said, maybe she could get some information together to pass on to them about how that would happen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just say that group met yesterday on implementation of the MacArthur Grant. It was a great meeting. We got a report out on some stress testing that the judicial staff and law enforcement and the attorney's offices had gone through a number of cases and had, had really brainstormed about ways that they could be more efficient, help cases move through the system faster to help those that have been accused and to, and frankly, to help just the whole system work better for everyone. I thought it was a great conversation as part of that MacArthur Grant. We have some funding for some positions for two years. And so we had a good conversation about how we might use that and what would be the, you know, what kinds of positions would give us the most impact on the, the system and the people that are served. And so I, I thought it was all very productive and it's, you know, a great opportunity that we have to use money provided by an outside organization to look hard at our system. And every system has ways that can be approved. And, and I think this was, this was a great, great way to use those funds to enhance services for everybody in Minnehaha County. So I was very pleased with that. I also had an opportunity yesterday to go out to the Zone 4 meeting for all the folks that run state fairs in a numerous state area. And they actually had to cancel the meeting down in Nebraska because of the flooding. And so they'd invited a few folks up for that. Their meeting started yesterday at noon and goes through tomorrow, I believe. But it was a great group of people who are passionate about fairs. So it was, it was fun to spend a little time with that group, so. Anybody else? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just make one more comment. I will be gone next week as I will be in Washington DC with a group of state and local and Pennington County policymakers. And what we'll be doing is a policy deep dive education on how we can change things in policy to improve the way we deal with mental illness and I believe drug and alcohol in the jail, in the criminal justice system. And so that is this next week. And there's probably about, I think, nine or 10 people from across the state that will be attending that conference.
Alright, well, thank you. Okay, item 19, new business? Any new business? Any old business? Item 20? Alright, if not, entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll recess for about 10 minutes.